We're not going to be...
I wonder who gets it all.
All I know is a lot of them are listening, how's that, you're gonna tune in?
Alright, so my name's Dan Kenny, I live at 58 Lennox Street, but I am the official trustee of 58 Midway Street.
You're gonna fight already.
He's already lost.
I'm the only other member on the trust.
The questions that I came up with just listing is, what is an in-law apartment? I have a degree in architecture, and to me, an in-law is attached to the house, it's part of the house. What they're asking for is a separate house, or in a non-conforming law. It's wrong. The neighborhood, I'm 50, I grew up in Lundin's house, in that barn, I played spin the bottle. I know that barn well, okay? The only thing that ever has ever lived in that barn are the stumps underneath the floorboards. It is in deplorable condition, it does need something done to it, but it doesn't need to be an in-law apartment. My basic concerns would be density, crowding the neighborhood. If they get this, you might see Bob and Dan Kenny up here with their two-car garage saying, "My in-laws are coming from Newburgh, New York, and they need a place to stay." Tom Gator has one, Denise Larson has a garage. Scotch Shovel, in the same neighborhood, has a nice-sized barn. So this is a can of worms, and once we get on that road, it's gonna be hard for you to deny everybody else. So, for all those reasons, I think this project should be denied. And again, nothing personal against the potties that are applying. My mother has had tea in the kitchen, and from what I've heard from everyone around, that they're a wonderful couple, but I just don't think this is a project for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Is there anyone else?
Yeah. Hi. My name is Denise Larson, D. Larson, I live at 210 Winthrop Street. So I'll be speaking on my behalf, and my wife's behalf, and also speaking on behalf of my mom, who isn't a butter. She lives next door at 1482. So I'll speak on her behalf first. She couldn't make it tonight, it's really hard to get parking here, you know, if you're a senior citizen, or anybody for that matter, but she wanted me to convey that she has concerns about it. For one, the barn, yeah, it's in deplorable condition. Nothing's been done in six years to do anything about the condition. In fact, every time I go over to her house, I take the shingles that come off and blow into her yard, and I throw them over the fence. I'm concerned that it's really gonna be... It's gonna be detrimental to her privacy. It's on top of her property line, and I think it's two or three feet from her driveway. I saw the designs, it looks like there's gonna be a long dormer on that side, so you know, that's gonna add noise, it's gonna add, it's gonna be like a privacy. She likes Tom and Vivian very much, they're very nice people. You know, I don't know them well, I'm sympathetic to their concerns, but I think we really need to balance what's best for the neighborhood with their concerns. And, you know, there's no guarantee that they won't finish the construction, and sell the property, you know, Airbnb, HomeAway. And again, I think it creates a precedent. Anybody else with a garage will have a really good case as to why they should have a second story. And I also think to call it an in-law apartment is really misleading, at worst, and inaccurate at best. It's not an in-law apartment. Actually, my aunt owned the house, my aunt and uncle, and they were the notorious people, Mr. Falkenstein, that you spoke about. My cousin, and lived in the in-law apartment for years. I don't know if it was legal then or illegal, I have no idea, but I know it was a very nice apartment, on the first floor, walkout, ocean view, and a number of family members lived there over the years, so... I guess that's my concern. You know, without proximity to the beach in Boston, this is a very desirable location for short-term rentals, vacation rentals. I don't know if you guys, sure you read the ledger, there was an issue in Swan with Airbnb, and the neighbors were very unhappy with it, so... So I just, you know, ask you guys to consider reality. What's best in the future for the neighborhood? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Counselor?
Anyone else from the public? I always say to that counselor, close things out. So John, now's your chance if you'd like to speak.
I have no comment.
So, good evening, Margaret LaForest Ward, one counselor. As you know, frequent flyer up here, same line as the last case, which is not typically what I start out a presentation with. Bad process, bad project. When the Saltmans applied years ago for their application for improvements, I believe we had a neighborhood meeting and we showed the plans to the neighborhood, is that correct? I'm pretty sure we did that. Do you remember? I think we did, I think we did.
Might be my decision.
I have a lot of these projects, but I'm pretty sure, and I was very impressed, because I happen to know the builder, and I know that the project was gonna be excellent because of the quality of craftsmanship. The Saltmans are fabulous people. I've been in their home, because they put it on the Hausneck Garden Tour, and you know if you live in Hausneck, I mean, they're looking at the best in the neighborhood to come in. So their basement is not decked by any stretch, by all means have a site visit, but it's spectacular, one of the best properties in Hausneck, and they've done a phenomenal job, and it really, they have a lot of the phone calls that I got about position, people felt bad because they said, geez, I really like the people. But I did receive five phone calls of residents who are of butters. I'm curious who's signed the petition, because all of the of butters seem to be here, and those speaking, Julie and John, live up by me and Mark Haven Road, are not of butters, although Ms. Johnson isn't a butter. So I'm curious who, because I haven't seen the application, so I'm disappointed again. Zoning application, not submitted to the ward counselor without reach in advance, as per your requirements. Second, I was here, I spoke, it's in the zoning decision that I supported their last application. What I would like to clarify, because they talked about the assessors, to your point, that what they see on the streets and how they're rating it is not what's legal, it's a resident's A. It is very clear in the zoning board decision, there's two conditions. Number two, the new bedroom additions shall have no exterior door or deck coming down. The basement shall have no shower or bath stall. The basement stairs to the first floor shall be open and common, with no doors, walls, partitions, or any separation from respective first-floor areas. No future building permits shall be issued without approval of the CVA. But number six, the building is to remain a single-family dwelling with no independent living units. What I really need to share with you, and all of you know it, because you see me frequently, and Mr. Chairman, a lot of them have been up by your house, where illegal basement apartments, they come before us trying to legalize it, or same thing. I mean, Lois Murphy, Mayor Hausneck, wants to rent out for income in her garage, and we tell her no. I mean, she's one of the most beloved neighbors we have, and here we are denying her. So very consistent, we have said, Mr. Chairman, just to your comments, we do not need every garage in Hausneck becoming a second dwelling unit. So I want to be very clear, what you calling in-law, in the City of Quincy zoning certification, when we codify this, we spent a lot of time looking at what we as a city wanted as a policy. And Mr. Duca, how many conversations have you and I had offline, before people even applied, telling them, don't even bother getting on the zoning board agenda? They've been very consistent. I've been on the city council representing Ward 1 in eight years, and in eight years, I have not supported one application for more than two, for two units in a resident's A. And I will stand by my mission to protect the integrity of this neighborhood, and stand in opposition of this application under the same premise as I have done before you, time and again. It is not about occupying every space of a neighborhood. I'm sorry that we have extenuating circumstances, but affordability can be an extenuating circumstance for someone else. How we could enforce it if it were to be family members only? And then I was shocked when Mr. Gator said to me that there's already a history of a rental with a criminal record by this current existing property owner. I don't have confidence that we'd be able to enforce it, Mr. Duca, and so I'd be looking for your input, but it's very clear, it's not a separate, independent unit, so this pre-existing non-conforming shift is misrepresented. Second, the size of the barn, have you seen the plans? What's there now is, you know, an oversized ship, you'd want a short barn, but this is a garage, this is two-and-a-half stories. This is huge. I know it's gonna be beautiful, but it's, you know, we don't need to be putting the density, all of the issues that you have referenced. It is a resident's A, it is a single-family neighborhood, it is predominantly overoccupied. Would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Close man aside, all that is on here, close.
Could we just discuss the things that were said there?
No, we cannot, thank you.
The rental?
Nope, nope, nope. Now it's that turn. Get down to Darrell Street, and you're gonna see garages turned into homes. It happened years ago. It can't happen, it just can't, it just can't happen. There's no way about it. You know, if that property was plenty big enough, maybe subdivided, there'd be another conversation, but not even, not that... I'll be voting no, because if they're not turning garages into residential homes, something happened to them, and they move, and then you have two residences living there. And don't say it don't happen, it happens in front of us all the time. People swear they're gonna live in them, and everything else, and it don't happen. I'm gonna say no, I don't want a garage turned into a home.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman, I have to say no. I have to accept that being characterized as an in-law apartment, where it's complete, against what our decision was back in 2011. So I'll be voting no.
So Brian?
Likewise, voting no. The other possibility is you could probably convert it to a condo at some point, well, that way. So I'll stay away from that one.
Any comments, Mr. Chairman?
The proposals are contravention to the decision 2011, voting no.
General?
The 2011 opinion was very clear.
Have a motion, please.
This is Mr. Chairman, Z17-55, Andrew Falkenstein, for a variance bodying of a vertically accessory structure to a residential unit on a premises number 20D, view added, made a motion to deny the variance.
Second? On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Further under tonight's agenda, case number 1756, Daniel Johnston, for variance install, full premise on 209 Winthrop Street, yeah? Representative here.
But it felt like two neighbors, and you saw the agenda, so you're immediate, funny.
Damon Anderson?
My name is Daniel Johnston.
We have a hearing going on here, please.
My name is Daniel Johnston, I live in 441 Beacon Street, in the back bay in Boston. My family owns a business called Ambassador Pools. We're at 1030 Turnpike Street in Canton, Mass. My father's 76 years old, I'm in charge of the entire business now. We put a pool in at 209 Winthrop Street, and originally I pulled the permit myself. As my understanding was and is in most towns, they require the water wall to be six feet from the property, but there's some gray area with that. Our pool currently at 209 is five feet, so it's within one foot into the setbacks from the wall. There's also a two-foot walk-around deck that goes around the pool, which would make it, if you're measuring from the walk-around, which doesn't touch the ground, but comes back into the pool, would be really three feet instead of six feet. So, unknown to me, Mr. Doyle, who's my client, his neighbor is here, and I had a chance to talk to a really nice guy, and he is opposed to it because we're looking right into his yard with the walk-around deck. And after seeing it from his perspective, it's really tough, because there's enough space to move it three feet, which is gonna cost me about $5,000, which is a first hardship. And even if we do move it three feet, we're still gonna be looking directly into his yard. Because of the miscommunication with me and my installer, or whatever happened, we put it one foot too close, if you're counting from the water wall, and three feet, two feet, too close, if you're counting from the walk-around deck. I've noticed in my first year running the business, that no matter how many people I hire, no matter how hard I try, nothing's ever gonna be perfect, and I lose sleep over it. I'm working 96 hours a week, I'm here now, I've worked since, you know, 7:00 AM. I just wanna make everybody happy. We have a perfect reputation online, we go out of our way to help our customers. I did the entire pick work myself, twice, because someone misplaced it the first time, which could have been my fault. So what I'd like to do is try and find a scenario that benefits everybody. I mean, the last thing I want to do is move the pool, because on the right side of the... Yeah, the right side of you looking at the property, there's enough room for Mr. Doyle to get his truck back to his shed, and get his machines out of the shed, which is why we placed it to that side of the yard to begin with. And then the biggest hardship of all is my father's gonna be very unhappy with me. Which is, you know, it is what it is. And again, I, from now on, I'll always look and be aware of other people's properties.
Is it the walk-around that's bothering the neighbor, or is it the pool itself?
It's, I think it's, I think it's the fact that no one came to him and talked to him first, because if I had reached out before we even came here, and under ordinary circumstances, if I was running the company, I absolutely would have, and I plan to. He's a really nice guy, he's my type of guy. And we probably wouldn't even be sitting here, maybe we wouldn't have a problem if I had personally been able to reach out, but I've been so busy.
You think you guys can sit down and talk and come back in two weeks?
That's what I suggested.
Is that Mr. Stone, is it?
Yeah, I appreciate talking with him, but, you know, the way this pool is, it has that walk-around. Now, when I put my... Steve Stone, by the way, so...
Thank you.
On the 215 Winthrop.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, general void. Listen, it's 30 inches from my fence to his deck walk-around, you know?
What about the walk-around?
And he's two feet high.
Can you take that walk-around off?
I need him over more, I wouldn't have done that, Mike. I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, I had a pool before, I had to jump through hoops to put mine together a minute ago, and then I sit there one day, and then your pool was there, and I'm sitting there going, wow. I mean, you're right there, you know? I mean, I don't know why I don't have the dive board on my side, just to come over, you know what I mean? I just wouldn't have done that.
But again, it's my fault. I went there, I placed the pool myself.
Now we get that, now let's look at what happened.
The thing's way up there, you know, I mean, it's two feet over my fence, my fence is six foot high. I wouldn't have done that, I wouldn't have got a swim pool like that in our neighborhood. I wouldn't have done that, I would have got an end ground pool, which would have cost a fortune. Or I would have got something different, and you could have come off your decking button, you know? It just, I wouldn't have done that, just, you know? I mean, me and you, we get along, you know what I'm saying? You never talk to me about, then bang, that's the end, I'm like, wow.
You guys think you can work something out in two weeks, and then come back for a trial party? If not, we'll make the decision.
I'm willing to...
Not you, sir. You're out of here. Get the install. Mr. Stone, are you just wanna make a decision tonight? Or you wanna sit two weeks and come back for... What do you wanna do, Mr. Stone?
Yeah, it is, I don't see, I was trying, I was trying to work with, talk with him. You know, I saw pools in there that I would have chosen, if I had known so. I am here, for what I mean, so, I don't know, you know, I mean, I just wouldn't have picked that, you know? So moving you over...
And they said?
It's three-and-a-half feet, you're gonna have to go over, and I understand it cuts you off, you access to your shed, you know? But really, I mean, you know, I love you, man, but, I mean, we're close. But not, we don't wanna do that most.
What's the setback requirement for a pool?
Six feet, I got the thing here.
So the six-feet setback, and where, 30 inches?
Well, the water wall is five feet. And the walk-around, so there's a water wall that comes off the ground, and then at the top, there's a two-foot walk-around deck that comes back, so the actual... Most towns go by the structure that touches the ground.
But your foot, you enclose your foot on the water wall.
Even with...
Your brief says four feet.
It's, it says four and a half, but I don't know...
We've all been there, we've been to the property, we've seen it, I got pictures in my brief right here.
And the other thing, too, is moving it three feet isn't gonna prevent us from looking into the yard either. And the only person that gets hurt in this situation is me. So I'm willing to put up a privacy fence, or try to do something, rather than cost, you know, a fortune to move it three feet over, which isn't gonna resolve anything for anybody. I mean, ultimately, I want everybody to be happy. And if we can put like...
Like they said, it would have been nice if somebody talked to me.
It's my fault, it's not his, I swear to God.
My kind of game, I'm always shaving trouble.
Do you think you guys can just talk for two weeks, see what comes up? You might get something out, you might get a nice privacy fence on that side, not even look at this pool, you might.
Give me a chance to try.
You might not.
I don't really see a resolution, but it kills me just to come up here, I didn't wanna come up here, and I don't know, you know? And I'm gonna do this again, I don't know.
No, we don't have to do it again, we'll do it right now.
Right here.
Thank you. So... The pool's already, the pool's already in, I mean, and it's not put in... Alright, does anyone here wanna speak in favor of this application? To put in the first floor. That's the first thing we're talking about. Anyone, first call, second call, third call closed? Correspondence, nothing?
No comments.
No comments? They reviewed the Doug Ruffin's project and have no comments. Anyone opposed on this? Mr. Stone, you have the floor now, let's put it on the record. Come out and tell us what you want.
Yeah, Steve Stone, 215 Winthrop Street. I guess I need... The walk-around, it's 30 inches right off my fence. You know, I think they should go by that, because to me, that's part of the pool. I know, you know, it cuts in, that's where the water is, but, you know, that deck is part of it. Should be over another three-and-a-half feet, you know?
So you'd be happy if they moved it three feet?
Three-and-a-half. It's the legal thing.
But it's not, it's not gonna change anything.
Wait, wait, can you get your traffic in and out, where you gonna go?
Yes. I thought if they moved the pool?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Second call, third call? Alright. I mean, I know Mr. Stone, which is funny, is I bought his house. And it has nothing to do with Mr. Stone. He charged me too much, that's all right.
It's worth every cent. I get 500 bucks a room, you know?
Foolishness.
Which side is light pool parties?
You know, and it's the builder's fault, we can all say what it is. It's the builder's fault, and he should have built it the way it was, and we have rules and conditions and laws for that. And if you wanted to move it, you should have came here before you put up the pool, which you didn't, so... That is the... I'll be voting in favor of not putting in the pool where it is, because it's already in, and he's asking to put in the pool.
So we're voting against the variance?
Exactly.
Which means then he has to move the pool.
Right. Yep, no, fine, correct.
I want your answer.
Yep. Have a motion, please?
How many feet do I have to move?
Three-and-a-half. I wanna put in legal, that's what I want, I want the pool put in legal. Whether that overhang counts or not, that's something else that I gotta talk about. And then they'll have to come back here and ask for variance included. Yeah. Yeah. Could I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, out of Z17-56, Daniel Johnston, for a variance install, pool on premise number 2 on Winthrop Street. I made motion to deny the variance, and require a permit be corrected, would be...
Hold.
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 Hold, by, to move the pool.
Seconded?
Seconded.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Further under tonight's case number Z1757. Chrisup, for finding to restore the previous non-conforming use. We don't have any five minutes. We couldn't wait, we're gonna pass out. Get some air, give us five minutes. We need some air.
It like turned off the ship and thought, come on.
Yeah, they didn't do any case, it was like a long...
Wooded and current, it always goes back to wooded and current.
Obviously, it's...
Why don't we get on?
Are you going out, or are you bringing them yourself?
Wait, go by.
I'm bad, Nick.
It's not always fair. It went down.
I'd actually try to get a little meat on our... Run a fire or something.
So on the other way, I could help you.
You know, so the fire's now really dark, but it's almost like... Heavy box and... Yeah.
I think you're...
Yeah, everybody. Are you good on here? Yeah.
Like, I feel like we have to ask these, what is heat blowing, should be... You go, and we're gonna see the experience, we can get right back, like, Joey, you know, he's on, that was great.
Lovely.
Hey, guys. Come on, we gotta go. Case number Z1757. Wyder Kristoff, for finding to restore the previous non-conforming use as an auto body shop on premise number 165 Hancock Street. The out there representative here.
They're outside.
John? I'll, I'll go. You go.
You go off, brush off the door?
You got like two seconds, and I'm getting out of here, it's about 100 minutes in here.
Let's go, we got a job for Josh.
John?
Mr. Bailey?
Video that.
Put a ballet? Do ballet?
Video that, John, quick.
John, you the ballet guy?
I found him.
You the ballet guy? Public Damon Anderson, record.
Good evening, Chairman, my name is Gene Charzick, I reside at 114 Glen Street, David, Mass. My mother is the owner of 165 Hancock Street. And this gentleman here is looking to get a permit to do auto repair, and that's it, nothing else.
What's it gonna include, auto repair? Damon Anderson, please.
Christopher, we got, uh, little 23 Midland Street.
Where?
By Dorchester.
And what are you, what are you gonna do there?
Uh, like, simple car repair, please, no painting, only car fixing, cars.
Just fix cars? Auto repair?
Auto repair.
What are you gonna do to the building?
What, I mean, do with the building?
Yeah. Back the doors and all that, you're gonna fix it up, you're gonna paint it, clean it up?
Clean it up and paint it.
You're gonna make it to the structure all?
No.
You're gonna remodel it all?
No.
Any question, applicant?
Uh, I have not, Mr. President.
How many cars, I do, how many cars are gonna, gonna hold in there?
The inside, oh, the lot.
The whole lot?
The whole lot, it's like a pile of cars.
So you wanna walk out? Any other questions?
Two questions, you gonna pay, go, pay for it? You gonna put payment down?
God be up to my mom, she owns the property.
Okay. Are you in this business now?
No.
You don't do this business now?
What do you do now?
I mean, I used to work as a car mechanic, and I'm looking to open up my own thing.
So you have half a business? Okay. Chip?
No questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here want to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call closed? Correspondence? Yep. There's a letter from the DPW, they reviewed the above project, they have no comments. Does anyone oppose or underside it? Oppose or underside? Opposed on the side? No, everyone left, everyone tired. With the weather. You know, I'd like to see that pocket fixed up, is what I'd like to see, it's just.
We can't put a new pavement down.
We're going to have to have a whole new set of something, because.
It does need pavement.
It needs a lot, I mean, the place is, it looks like a crap place.
Correct.
I know, and it's got to be fixed, so, until you come back with a good plan, I'm going to say no to this, and you guys are going to have to figure something out. I did.
So what do you suggest?
I don't suggest, I suggest coming back with a plan, there's no planning, it's just, we want to find it, which, to me, I can't, because the place is really a piece of crap.
I agree.
Hasn't been taken care of in a long time.
I agree.
And it's like, I just got to say, I'm not impressed with what I saw.
Okay.
I'll be going. That place is all cleaned up, it's not a stain, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so it's cleaning up and come back.
That's just me, there's more other guys, more other people to talk.
You might want to withdraw. Excuse me? You might want to withdraw at this time, and then come back with some sort of plan.
Okay.
So, try to clean the property somewhat, so.
I was waiting to see you.
I've been working.
Yeah, no, that's fine, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're right, you're right.
They think I run a business up there, that site has had some history with the boats and everything left all over, it was something. Correct. That's a nice new building across.
I don't even know what's there.
You know, I think that really the minimum that you got to do is take care of, clean it up, hold it up on that site, making it, you know, so people, you know, it won't be made.
We have a job today, and the disposal of all the debris.
In the site, yeah. It's just, it's a nice piece of crap.
Correct.
And then the price, where you can even rent that, and not put something really basic, it's a beautiful thing.
And again, that, that area, because you can see up front, they know that, the building next door, they put a lot of.
Yes, it's very beautiful.
And it's supposed to be a development directly across the street.
Right.
And, you know, you don't want to continue to operate, you know, something in there, you want to make it something, you can grow it up.
Okay.
So, that would be right around the day.